You can just sustain.
It looks like it's time to start, so we'll start the study meeting of the West Valley City Council. This meeting is being held both at our anchor location in person and electronically. I see that we have six members of the council either in attendance there or electronically. There are only two there in that city hall, is that correct? Councilman Nordfeld, okay, now Councilman Nordfeld and Councilman Bueller, with this, the way the study room is set up, you are quite a ways away. So if you happen to raise your hand unless you jump up and down on the table, I probably won't notice you. So just sing out, you know, well, say out, you don't actually have to sing, but we, I believe that Councilwoman Lang will join us shortly, but we do have a quorum with that then. And the public, by the way, also can join us in person or electronically. So on our agenda next is the minutes of June first. Do we have a motion and a second on the minutes? We'll move to approve a minute. Okay, a motion and a second, and Councilwoman Lang has joined us, so we are all here for this vote. Then because we are partially electronic without objection, the minutes will be approved. Hearing no objection, then that vote was unanimous. On our meeting tonight, we are going to study some items for next week. First of two public hearings that we will hold next week. The first one is application GPZ dash three twenty twenty filed by Joel Salisbury. This is on property at twenty eight ninety two South Decker Lake Drive. When we deal with this next week, we will deal with three items in relationship to this application. Ordinance twenty one dash thirty six, a general plan change, ordinance twenty one dash thirty seven, a zoning change, and resolution twenty one dash ninety three, a development agreement. So with that in production, it looks like Mr. Pastorek is ready to bring us up to speed on this issue and highlight and answer any concerns the council may have. Mr. Pastor.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. I'll go ahead and share my screen and go through this application. So the property here at twenty eight ninety two South Decker Lake Drive is just over sixteen acres. It's currently zoned a combination of the A or agricultural zone on the western portion and then M or the manufacturing zone on the eastern portion. The general plan designation is commercial or light manufacturing, and the requested zoning is RM for the entire parcel, and then for the general plan, it's high density residential. In terms of just surrounding uses, you do have the existing EGATE apartments there on the west as well as the state Decker Lake youth detention facility on the west. You have the county park, the Decker Lake Park there on the north, and then you have office uses there to the northeast and east of the property as well as some light industrial. This next image, just a close up of that, you can see again, property, of course, is vacant currently in just some of the neighboring uses. Got a few pictures here just to orient you. So this is looking across Decker Lake Drive toward the west. You can see the existing EGATE apartments out in the distance, and then on the, on the right in the distance is the state facility. This is more looking, again, across Decker Lake Drive from east side of the street towards some of the, you can see the office, one of the office buildings there on the right hand side of the picture. This next image is taken about halfway north on the property, looking to the south. You can see the Maverick Center out in the distance as well as the hotels there along thirty one hundred south. So there is, again, about halfway between the north and south ends of this property. There's a signalized intersection there on Decker Lake Drive, and so you have this existing access into the property at that location. This is looking more to the northwest, you can see across Decker Lake and then some office buildings there on north of Parkway Boulevard. And then this is the street that runs along the west side of the property that leads back towards the state facility. And then on the right side of the image is the Decker Lake Park that's owned by the county. So this is the, the concept plan. So this is for a rental development. And you can see there's two different colors of buildings here. So you have the darker colored buildings. Those are two-story townhomes, they're three-story, excuse me, two-story townhomes, three-bedroom units. And those represent ninety-eight units total. Then you also have kind of the lighter brown buildings, and those are more stacked flat units, meaning there's a unit on the ground level and then a unit on the upper level, and so two units in a building. But these are a little bit different, and I'll explain as we go through the slides. So the light brown buildings can be used a little bit interchangeably, so they can either be rented, the unit downstairs and upstairs can be rented independently, or someone could rent both the upstairs and downstairs and use both units as essentially a single unit. So they're designed to also be rented as a three-bedroom unit if someone chose to do that. In terms of parking, all of the three-bedroom townhomes, again, the darker brown buildings have a two-car garage. And then the other buildings have a, a single-car garage per unit. So each of the stacked flat units has a single-car garage plus other supplemental surface parking as well. So just going through here, these are the, some renderings of the product. So this would be the back of the buildings that have the stacked units. So as I mentioned, there's the, the garage for each unit on the backside. This would be then the, the front side of those stacked flat units. So from the outside appear more like townhomes, but they are stacked flat units. A side view of that same building. This image here would be the, the, the just townhome. So someone renting these again would be renting a three-bedroom, both up and downstairs. So that's the front. These are just some black and white elevations of the same product, so. And there, there would be varying sizes, meaning, you know, some buildings may have four units, others may have six. So, but the, the architecture is essentially the same, it's just a matter of how many units per building, depending on the location. So you can see the front and back of the townhome product, the sides on this image. This image here shows the back and sides of the stacked flat units, and then the next one would be the fronts. So in terms of the floor plan, so the, the townhome units, which are again the darker brown units on the, the site plan, this is pretty typical. So again, it's, you have the kitchen and living on the main level and the garage, and then the upstairs would be the bedrooms, bathrooms on the upper level. This particular unit would be the corner unit. When you have a, you know, a building, say, with six units, these, the two ends would be like this. And then the, the internal units are the ones that are not on the ends would be like this, very similar. But then this next slide helps to explain how the, the stacked flat units work. And so if you look at the image that's, the larger image on the left, which is the ground level, you can see that there's the two garages that are separate from each other. And then you have the one-bedroom unit that is on that first level. You also notice there's the stair that leads up to the second unit. And if, if someone were to rent both the, the downstairs and upstairs, then it can, again, function as one unit. And then you can see the larger image on the right would be the two-bedroom unit that's on the upstairs. So this next couple of slides just show color schemes of the units. So one of the things that the applicant's proposing here that's unique for an apartment development would be just the number of amenities. And so in, in the issue paper, there's a description and as well as in the development agreement of the, the amenities. So some of the things that are unique here, and this particular slide is showing a lazy, a lazy river as well as a pool, hot tub, and other features here that support the pool. So that's reflected in the development agreement. And this shows just the location of some of the, the amenities that are proposed. And so just to, just quickly go through. So they have the, the outdoor pool with what they're calling a boulder cave. You can see in that earlier rendering, the lazy river and water slide. There's courtyard space between the units, the clubhouse, fitness room, game room, hot lot, outdoor fire pit, hot tub, walking kind of trails throughout the site. They're doing electric vehicle charging stations at the clubhouse, outdoor covered pavilion, a dog park, hammock, hammock lounge, bike maintenance station, and then fencing in, which is reflected in the development agreement in, in certain locations along the perimeter. One other point on the amenities would be that, given the proximity to Decker Lake Park, and right now, again, Decker Lake Park is owned by Salt Lake County, but there really aren't, there's really not much there by way of improvements. It's essentially just a grass area. So is, as part of the development agreement, they've offered to invest five hundred and forty thousand in improvements of Decker Lake Park. Now, they have been discussing that offer with Salt Lake County, and the way we worded the development agreement is if in the, if in the event that the, the county, for whatever reason, does not accept those funds, then the, the developer would still contribute those funds to the city, and we would then use those on a park nearby. So, but they, along with those amenities, they are asking for an exception on the amount of landscaping and open space or recreation space. You can see here on this proposal, it's just over forty-four percent, which the recently adopted code would be fifty percent. And the applicant's argument, if you will, would be that, given the level of amenities and the investment in the neighboring park is the, their request there. This next image shows the parking that's proposed. So you can see in the units, of course, all having garages. Then you can also see in the green would be driveway spaces outside of the garage, and then the kind of brown color would be surface spaces that are distributed throughout the site. And that is the last slide. Are there questions that I can answer?
Council?
Eve?
Yes.
I met with the developer at his request last week, and I got a little different impression of those stacked units.
Okay.
The impression I got was that they were not separately rentable, but that if somebody rented the full unit, he could then use that lower unit as a mother-in-law apartment or something of that sort, rather than having it rent out to two different entities or groups.
Okay, so, so I think I can work on getting further clarification. It was, it was my understanding, they could be rented independent of each other, but I can, I can certainly.
That, that would kind of change my impression of it drastically. The mother-in-law apartment, I really appreciate it because knowing, knowing my situation, it's nice to have.
Okay.
Thank you.
No, thank you. Okay. I know the, the applicant is listening in on the meeting today, so certainly, hopefully he can be prepared to address that next week, or in two weeks, since we're not meeting next week.
So I think that it's an exciting project. I mean, I would like to live there, especially if I just had young kids. It's also been problematic, but it's hard to find something to go into there, at least for all the time I've been on the council. And I'm excited about the prospect of developing in the park. And, and I agree that the six percent loss it brings face for the improvements in the park, I don't see that as a loss to us at all. I saw the notes from, or the minutes from the planning commissioner, they think that it was special enough. Well, I don't think we have anything like this. I know we're in this city. And I think right with its proximity to two fifteen, that it could be seen, and I think it'd be a great project, great landmark for the city. It's not going to bother any neighbors there. And it might spur some reinvestment across the other side where we have apartments that are older, that could maybe use reinvestment, but they have to compete with this project. So those are my thoughts.
For me, the rental aspect is one I'm not as happy with. I think we need stability down in that area, and I think the turnover rate would be extremely high. I do have to say though, Steve, I think the parking situation is much better than we have in any of these other projects.
You know, this, this particular project highlights this issue of changes taking place in our city. My estimation would be that those units where they could have a mother-in-law apartment would, in many cases, be converted into two apartments, regardless of, you know, how we zone it or whatever, because that's happening right now with single-family homes, and many of them are being converted to duplexes. Now, that's not all of those. Some of those do come in and get approval for those, but many of them do not. And that seems to be a very significant trend in our city. I've also seen it in Taylorsville and West Jordan as well. Is that where we want to head with density and units here in West Valley? I've still got a question on that, but I may be, in fact, probably am in the minority, but I do have some concerns about the trend here that is developing and seems to continue to grow. Any comments from council members?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. The difference is these are designed and built like that. These are separate apartments. It's not like somebody partitioning off their single-family home that was built to be a single family. So these are needing the, I mean, they're bathrooms and kitchens, and they're ready to be small apartments, or larger apartments, or a converted bigger apartment. It's, I don't think it's at all like, you know, different homes that are being converted, mostly illegally, into separate apartments. I don't think it's okay to have one-bedroom apartments and two-bedroom apartments and three-bedroom apartments. I'd rather see them in a, a complex that's built for them, that's designed for them, that has the parking and utilities for them to land in our name.
Well, in, in many of those that, or at least I've heard about, they do put in, you know, the various things like bathroom and kitchen and so forth. However, that is a bit expensive for them to do. I just raise it as a general concern. There are many things about this project that I like, some of the things that they're doing. But as long as the council is comfortable with it and say, yeah, this is kind of the direction we want to head, I guess I'm okay. I was looking more for many of these properties to either go senior housing or to go to apartment buildings or the new energy efficient type of units. But there's still some others that we can deal that way. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. Then we'll go to the next item on our agenda. This is the next public hearing scheduled for next week. Application Z dash two twenty twenty-one filed by Northrop Grumman Innovation Systems. And we will deal next week with an ordinance, ordinance twenty one dash thirty-eight to amend the zoning if this were to be approved, and resolution twenty one dash ninety-four to approve a development agreement possibly. So this is at sixty-eight sixty-five west, forty-one hundred south. With that then, Mr. Pastorek, you're taking this one as well, I believe.
Sorry, I had to unmute. Thank you, Mayor. So I'll share my screen again. So this property is seven point six acres. You can see the address here is sixty-eight sixty-five west, forty-one hundred south. The property is currently zoned A, and the requested zone is the RE zone with also a sliver, if you will, of R one eight, and I'll explain that here shortly. You do have some existing property directly east of the area highlighted in red that's already zoned R one eight. And so as we look at the concept plan that's associated with this application, there is a, a portion of the concept that's already zoned R one eight. And just for reference, you do have the railroad tracks here along the south side of the property. Here's just a close up. Again, of course, it's a vacant property. So just some images here, this is along forty-one hundred south, looking to the southwest at the Oakers. You can see the vacant property there here on, on the, the image. This is looking more to the southeast. You can see the famous water tower out there in the distance, and then the Wasatch there on the left. This is looking straight south across forty-one hundred south of the property. This is looking east along forty-one hundred south. And then more to the northwest from the property. This is a, on the north side of the street, was an ivory development done a number of years ago on, on the north side of the street. So this is the, the concept plan. And as I pointed out, if you can see on the image, there's up, up along the north end, along forty-one hundred south, you can see lot, hopefully two oh one, and then also one oh two. Those two, the, the boundary between those two lots is kind of the dividing line between the RE zone that there, that's being requested and the existing R one eight zone that's on the east. So, you know, the lots from one oh two south are existing R one eight, and then two oh one south of that and west of that would be the RE zone. The reason for the, the request for a sliver of R one eight has to do with the development that's existing to the east. So you'll notice on this image, there are a few lots labeled three oh nine, three ten, three eleven. Those are, that's an existing subdivision that was built in the early nineties. And as the applicant here surveyed the property, they found that the existing fences for those homes was shifted west by two feet. And so one option would be they could, you know, work with those owners to move their fences to where they should be. But since they've been there for about thirty years, what they were hoping to do is keep their fences where they were and then just shift the lot, the new lots to the west by two feet. And so for that reason, they're asking for a, a two-foot wide by over five hundred feet long strip of R one eights, or roughly a thousand square feet along that, the west edge of those lots so that, so they don't end up moving that existing fence. So if, if that two-foot strip of R one eights not approved, then either they move the fence or they just end up with lots that are narrower as a result. You'll notice also on this image, there are a couple of lots in blue that are existing where there again, this, this particular developer year or whoever built this subdivision in the early nineties apparently didn't do the surveying correctly, but that was off as well. So they are asking for, in the development agreement, a rear yard setback exception for those lots in yellow, just to give a little bit of wiggle room, again, because of the, the fence issue. And then the lot on the, more towards the southeast corner is more just given the shallow depth north to south of the property. And that's the, the last slide. And so just to, to recap, so again, the, the east part of this property is already zoned R one eight. So altogether, this, the property shown in this concept represents nineteen point three acres. So eleven point six is already zoned R one eight, and they're asking for seven point six to be zoned RE. The development agreement covers the entire property and basically. The development agreement covers the entire property and basically commits the developer to build homes that meet our standards on all lots, so not just the RE, but all of the lots, as well as calling out those setback exceptions for three lots. So three lots would be able to have a rear yard setback of fifteen feet instead of twenty feet. And that concludes our presentation on this item. And Mayor, you're muted.
How did I get that on? Boy, where's the actual dividing line between the RE and the R one eight? Is that on this one, that kind of dotted line going down between the east and west?
So are you able to see my cursor?
Nope. Let's move it around a little.
So, okay, it looks like maybe not. So on the, on the north end, you'll see a dash line that's between lots two oh one and one oh two. If you extend that dash line straight south, that's the dividing line between the RE and the R one eight. So that dash line kind of jogs as you move south, but if it were to go straight south, that's the dividing line.
Okay. And there's an exception for the ones shaded in green because of the fence line? And then the two yellow ones, right?
So the exceptions would be, the setback exceptions would be for the lots in yellow. The ones that would be is just highlighting the the request to ask for the the two feet of R one eight zoning. So because those lots in greens are the ones impacted by the fence that's encroaching by two feet.
But there's still R one eight, right?
They are R one eight currently. So it's it's basically shifting the R one eight zoning west by two feet so that they don't end up moving the fence.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Wait a minute. Is everybody on mute? Is the council still there?
We're here, Mayor.
No questions though, huh?
I like this this development. We get some RE zone and what was already R one eight is still R one eight, but they have to sign a new development agreement with higher standards for building. So am I right in in that summary, Steve?
Right. So the, so all the lots would follow the the standards that we have in the code currently. And as far as house size and materials and that. And so, yes, we're getting a, we're getting a blend of R one eight on what's already zoned R one eight. And then the RE is really the the new zoning request. And so those, that portion, the seven point six acres would be the new RE zoning. And just to, based on this concept, the the mix is there's to be forty-two lots that are R one eight under this concept and then sixteen that are RE.
Steve, we can require a sound barrier wall between those development and the railroad track.
So the code currently requires that there be a chain link fence between a railroad and residential development. So the code doesn't require it. It's something, you know, in the meeting next or in in two weeks when we have the public hearing, we could discuss with the with the applicant, that one of the things that the, it was actually brought up in planning commission and one of the concerns there was it's it's kind of the trade-off of having a solid wall and the potential for graffiti versus just doing a chain link fence. But it is something that could be discussed with the developer and we could, we could bring it up with the developer between now and two weeks.
Steve?
Yes, sir.
Is this in the area that we used to lovingly call the overthrust zone?
It is. It is within the overpressure zone, so that would still apply. So the
So that would, yeah.
Any, any new homes would need to meet those standards in this area, which to a large extent means like tempered glass on windows.
Yeah, and windows not facing towards that zone and I know I I worked in the school that was built there. Couldn't figure out why all the windows were on the backside of the school. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Steve, what is the middle of the house size for the R one eights? Is it the same as the RE?
It is, yeah. It's it's the same size regardless of the zone.
Thank you.
Steve, in the planning commission, they have discussed also the option for the basically notifying potential residents of the proximity to the railroad line. And if I remember correctly, it was stated that it's not required, but the developer could do that optionally. Is there a way that we could? Because inevitably, someone's going to come back and complain. I would love to see them be notified upfront.
So we have, one of the things we mentioned with the planning commission, there is actually a code requirement that whenever you have a development going in next to your agricultural property, that there be a note on the plat. But we don't have a similar requirement for being next to railroad tracks. So that would be something where, again, I think if the developer is willing to add that, we could, it could be something that could be placed on the plat so that, so that's, you know, when someone's looking to buy a home, that that's notified there.
I would personally be in favor of pressing for that, for sure. And then related question off of Councilman Northville. What would a sound barrier wall look like? I'm assuming a six-foot masonry wall is not going to do it. If that was an option, what would that look like?
We don't, so we don't have a specific height called out for a sound barrier type wall. You know, when you look at, for example, what UDOT does, often it really depends on the facility to determine what the height is and what's nearby. But, you know, I've seen some sound walls UDOT does that are ten, twelve feet tall. So in this case, when we were talking about a train, it would probably take some further looking into to see what what would be needed, but also how effective it would be. And, you know, even if, let's say, we did eight, ten feet, would that actually help? Because in some cases, just doing a wall, you know, along a section without extending it beyond or because of topography may not actually dampen the sound.
For sure. Yeah, understood.
Well, and it could also have the unintended consequence of just limiting, eliminating their sound. This could mean the back of their house where they want a garden or something. Now with that wall in south, they're not going to get a garden. I would like to look at a future ordinance on annotating the plaques that are near railroads like with the agricultural so that that would be a routine and required annotation. So I didn't bring it up in future agenda items, but maybe we can make a note of that, discuss that.
Yeah, sounds good.
On that point, do we have, is it attached to the plat that they're in an overpressure zone?
I I don't believe that that's a plat requirement. We would certainly, you know, as people come in to apply for permits, we would certainly make them aware of that. But it's, it's not something that is required to be on the plat either that I recall.
Well, on that one, it's same as the farm animal. If the residence changes hands and the first person doesn't tell the second, they have no idea they're building in a, or buying in an overpressure zone. I think for our responsibility, we should do that. My concern with the chain link fence in the backyards of these is because it's next to a railroad, I think it needs a non-climbable fence. So a block wall of some sort just to keep kids in their own yard and the curiosity of a train and a train track not ending in a horrific accident. I had curious kids one time. And they're invisible. They're not, they're a little bit more reasonable now. But it's just that consequence, they don't really understand. So I would be in favor of moving or change in the development agreement to having a solid fence of some kind, some type that's not climbable. And that's not a chain link, but no slacks. That really can be done.
Okay, council, I've heard three different proposals here. And I'm not sure which one the majority of you support, or maybe all of them. One is a solid fence. Another is a sound wall fence, which may be different from the solid fence. And then the third was that the fence or or that information needs to be disclosed back there that there's a railroad there. Now, that third one isn't exactly a wall, but is it intended by all of you to have that each of those go back to the developer as a condition? Or just as a suggestion or for a change in future projects?
For me, I would like on the plat, notification they're in an overpressure zone and they're a railroad, which you would assume that would be logical, but and then a non-climbable fence. I'm not as worried about the sound, but I like the train sounds.
Yeah, I think the sound would take a lot of study. In other words, I know that sound walls have been put up on freeways. And in some locations, they made the sound worse and were subsequently taken down. That's in the Salt Lake Valley. And so we, that may take a little bit of work to figure out. Do you want, yeah, go ahead.
My concern is that we've already had residents come to us over the years saying, we didn't know we were right next to this railroad and guess what? There's a train running on it.
And it blows its horn.
And it blows its horn. What can we do to get them to stop that? And it only blows its horn because of federal regulations. And so
Well, you can get them to stop it if we just shut down forty-one hundred South. You know, that's an easy solution. Oh, wait a minute. Maybe that wouldn't work. As long as it crosses forty-one hundred South, yeah, it has to have the horn. So it sounds like if I kind of kept track, the notification is is a requirement. Is there anyone objecting to having staff go back and on that notification that this is by the railroad tracks? And yes, the train runs there.
And the overthrust zone. And the overthrust.
And the overthrust. Any objection to those two items? Hearing no, no objections or disagreement? That sounds like something you would like staff to put together to include for next week. Okay, so that one's taken care of. What about a non-chain link fence, a block fence? I know Councilwoman Lang is in favor of that.
I would prefer a block fence.
To?
I'd be interested in hearing more about that, just for the safety component of it. Sound barrier wall is not a deal for me or of big interest to me. But for the safety components, I'm willing to look at that as well.
Council, Councilman Fittisimano, and of course, Councilman Bueller, I'm having a hard time hearing, but it sounded like you were interested in that. But if we're talking about considering this next week and not extending it, we would have to have some action or some information by then. Is that your intent, Councilman Jake?
Yeah, for me, I just wanted to know what about a chain link fence lends to this additional security? Or if we're just talking about a regular fence? Because Councilwoman Lang had mentioned something about an unscalable fence. And so that, whatever that feature is that could be added to a fence within reason.
Then let me ask Mr. Pastrick, is that something you could have for next week, do you think?
So the the ordinance does refer to a non-climbable chain link, which, and I'll have to refresh or look back through this, but I think it just means that it's it's maybe a little bit tighter, tighter pattern on the fence. But we can look at the the option of either a masonry wall where it's post and panel or a chain link fence.
And and for me, I would be happy to ask them that. I wouldn't make a condition one way or the other. As kids can climb a six-foot block wall.
Okay, Councilman Bueller, I heard a little bit of what you said, but pull that microphone over closer to you. We don't have to share it since I'm not there. And would, would you mind repeating that?
I wouldn't mind asking a developer for a block wall, but I would not make that a conditional capacity.
Okay.
I think that it really, I mean, they may come up with a great creative solution here for another problematic property. Bringing us to good development with this RE homes and I appreciate the work they've done.
Okay, so staff will gather information and discuss it with the developer and we'll see on that next week.
And Mayor?
Yes.
We don't have, we do not have meeting next week because of the gala?
Oh, yes, that's right. I saw it was canceled. Well, instead of saying next week, next weeks, make that plural too.
Weeks.
I just think that gives them more time to come up with a solution.
Yes, that's right. Okay. Was there anything else there? It seemed like there was a, did that cover all the items? Mr. Pastrick, you have any more questions?
No, sir.
Okay. Anything else on this particular issue? Oh, I did want to ask Mr. Pastrick just a quick, two quick questions. One, where's the nearest park? The picture doesn't show it and I can't remember from that area. And then the second question, if you would address, as I looked at the connecting streets there to the current subdivision, that stub street now will connect and run east and west there. But on the other side of it, it looks like it's going to connect further. But I'm questioning how developable that last part is because of the railroad tracks and even especially on the southern end there. Looks like that's going to start to get pretty tight.
Right. So on the first question, I believe it's Falcon Crest Park is the closest park, which is to the north. Actually, not, not very far away. And then
The one just off of forty-first there.
Yeah, it's it's not right on forty-one, but it's 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 actually north and in in that neighborhood to the north.
Yeah, and just a little bit west, isn't it?
I I believe so.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, I know the one you mean. That's right. Okay.
And then as far as the stub street, so the property west of the property that's proposed for the rezoning would remain, as right now, would remain the agricultural zone and also is, would remain in the ownership of Northrop Grumman. Now, at this point, we we don't anticipate them selling that, but, you know, we just, we never know. And so I think they had shown a stub street there just for, you know, potential future development. There, there is the possibility you could have more lots there to the west. There there is the possibility you could have more lots there to the west if they were to sell off more property. And so that's why this particular concept is showing that.
Okay, thank you. That I was just curious because that will be interesting if that ever comes back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, anything else?
Steve?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I know this, that that location a little bit far off from everything, so the traffic is not that bad, right?
We've looked at the traffic volumes in this particular section as is quite a bit lower on forty one. As you move, the the volumes are much higher as you move east, but this section the volumes are quite a bit different than say, you know, closer to Bangor Highway.
Right, thank you.
I was just gonna add, there is a park just east of this property, about a block, Brookfield Park, right on forty one hundred South as well. So it's even within walking distance if there's Kerber Gutter out there.
Okay, thank you. Hearing no further comments or questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Pastrick. Let's see, what's next on our agenda? It looks like a resolution twenty one dash ninety five. This is for an urgent need to purchase and install a new filtration system for secondary water at the Ridge Golf Course. And it looks like Nancy Day is here.
Yes, Nancy Day Parks and Recreation Director. Good evening, council members and mayor. It's good to be here. So as as the mayor mentioned, this is a resolution to replace the water filtration system at the ridge. The current system is nearing failure very quickly and we have some significant problems with that. And of course, we want to maintain the turf and the green space and to be able to keep it up and running and operating. In working with the purchasing department, we're able to sole source this particular project. And, you know, we're following the purchasing requirements under the city code for that. So this particular company is one that installed the initial pump station and would actually need to be hired to go ahead and connect the software and all of those functionalities there as well. There is approximately what what we anticipate ten thousand dollars we'll be able to get from the sale of a surplus filter that is for the existing system that we have right now that is not compatible with the new system. So we anticipate being able to recruit a little bit of this cost for this new system. Are there any questions?
Counsel?
You're so convincing.
Thank you.
Well, anything to do with water is very important, so that'll help keep our golf course green. With that, then, thank you. We'll go on to the next item, new business, and this is let's see, what did we cite? Call this an administrative action? And so application SMI dash two twenty twenty one filed by Scott Thorson for property at fifty nine ninety three West SR two oh one from South Frontage Road. And it looks like Mr. Lehman is joining us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Steve Lehman with the Community Development Department. We've got some slides for you for this property. It's located in an area that the council reviewed a previous application for the Godfrey West subdivision. So the area may look a little bit familiar to you as we go through some of these slides. So this first slide at the top of the screen here is an aerial photograph that shows the the subject property. It's approximately thirty two acres in size. To the southwest, you'll notice the old Rocky Mountain Raceway. To the west of this property is the Godfrey Trucking Business currently. The you'll notice that we have fifty nine hundred West drawn in on this plat, which is a new frontage road that UDOT constructed as part of the Mountain View Corridor. And also twenty four hundred South is also illustrated. And we'll just go through a couple of slides just to give you an idea about the property's location and current conditions. So this is looking from, this is looking north. This is the new fifty nine hundred West road that UDOT constructed. Mountain View Corridor is just off to the right hand side of this picture. The next slide is looking across the property to the south, to the northwest, excuse me. You'll see the Godfrey property off to the distance there. So the land is vacant. One thing you'll notice with this particular slide is that when you constructed this right of way, they did not install any improvements on the west side of the road. As part of the subdivision application, we are requesting that they install curb gutter and sidewalk as part of the the site improvements. And the next slide. Now we're on the, so if you look to the to the end of this road, that typically would that would have gone directly east for a connection into fifty six hundred West. This is where the road curves to create fifty nine hundred West. So this is the new frontage road that you constructed. Off to the right side is detention basin that's been used on this property for many years. The next slide. So this is looking to the northwest. You know, once again, off to the left side is some detention area. This is where the frontage road, once again, paralleled two oh one, if you will. But due to Mountain View Corridor be constructed, this is a new connection to fifty nine hundred West. I think we have just another slide for you. This is looking due south, so those truck trailers are part of the Godfrey property. Property off to the left side is a property that is under consideration to be subdivided. And the next picture is of the subdivision plat itself. So you'll notice the the large curve in the property, that is the right of way that we were just looking at. The two oh one frontage road extends to the south as the Eric showing the cursor and ends at twenty four hundred, which goes over the Mountain View Corridor. So as we mentioned, this is a thirty two acre property. The purpose here is to create two large lots for future warehouse office buildings. Lot one will be just approximately twenty acres. Lot two is just over twelve acres in size. The only other thing that I'd like to add is just the name of the subdivision, Lee Creek. So this is an area that has an existing creek that extends from the Ritter Canal all the way over to twenty one hundred South. And so the developer chose to name the subdivision Lee Creek. We did include in the subdivision report that this this area does have some wetlands and also some areas of flood control issues. We are working with them through the engineering as well as Salt Lake County to ensure all of those measures are met. Based on the studies that have been done so far, this does not impact the building locations that are proposed for either lot one or two. And that is our report.
Thank you, counsel. Hearing no further comments or questions, Mr. Lehman, it looks like we're done with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oops, I had some technical difficulties there. Said the host wanted to have me come in as a panelist, so not quite sure what it's asking. But next on our agenda is the consent items. The first one is a little different. And I'd like to get a little bit of information on that. A quick claim deed from Brighton Canal Company. All of the others on the agenda, B down through M, are city managers' appointments to various committees. The Audit Committee, Planning Commission, Business License Hearing Board, Clean and Beautiful and Professional Standard Review Board. I think most of them are reappointments. I think I was told there were two that were new. So maybe if we could just, I personally would like a few comments on the quick claim deed on the Ritter Canal, excuse me, Brighton Canal. And so.
Mayor, this was.
Oh, there it is. Yeah, I looked at that and I guess it includes that full distance. It was threesome acres, but it's pretty narrow.
Correct. So the Brighton Canal is going to actually cease operations north of the tracks line and about twenty seven hundred and south. They've already filled in portion of the canal plus the Redwood Road. And eventually they cease operation now. But they're going to continue to operate through this irrigation season. We've had some discussions with the canal company about the the canal easement area between the tracks line or between Crystal Avenue, which is north of the tracks line.
Well, I'll I'll have.
Mayor, does this work better? Can you hear me up here?
Yes.
Okay, let me just start over real quick. So the Brighton Canal. The Brighton Canal Company is looking to, I mean, they're they're already discontinuing use of part of the canal. They are proposing, we've had discussions with them about the the canal easement area between Crystal Avenue and Redwood Road. The Canal Company is is selling their their easement and whatever property rights they have in the canal easement in other areas, but in this area, they are willing to donate the easement to the city. So the canal here passes through lots in the Chesterfield area. Approximately the the back property lines of those lots, and then it goes around the Davis Estates subdivision where the cursor is right now. So the city has interest in this because the canal right of way in the past has been a problem area, a nuisance area with illegal camping and other activities going on back there. So this, by accepting the deed, the city will have the property rights to the easement area and will be able to work with the adjacent property owners to, you know, either give the land to them or if the city determines that there's a beneficial use to the city to retain the property.
Okay, thank you. That that was much better.
Good.
It was so, it was so good, I actually heard every word.
All right, any questions?
Hearing no further comments, counsel, on any of the consent agenda? Okay. We'll move on to our communications. We have Bangator Highway update from UDOT. And I don't know who's there, so they'll just introduce themselves or are they connecting electronically?
We are here. Can you see me or? Probably just going up my nose is the probably just see my nose.
Okay. Okay. Time is yours.
Looks like we're just gonna get the PowerPoint up and up and going. Thanks. That was smooth. Well done, guys.
They're seeing you now with the computer camera.
Okay.
So keep that camera towards you.
Well, thank you. This is one of the disadvantages of being tall. Yes, lean over to the microphone. Does it really? That's fancy. I'm just not gonna try that. I'll just lean over. Yeah, I didn't know that was. Have you guys not tried this yet?
All right, that's only the other one that goes.
You guys are just messing with me now. So my my name's Brian Allen. I'm the project manager for the Bangor Highway Environmental Project Studies. So you can see this map right here. This are all the different intersections that we're currently studying. This project is exciting. It's a huge opportunity. We are basically looking at all the at-grade intersections. So when I say at-grade intersections, I mean a traditional signalized intersection to make those convert those to full interchanges. So something you'd see along I fifteen or the other Bangor Highway interchanges that have been converted already. So you'll notice that a lot of the the Bangor Highway interchanges have been converted to what's called a spooey, a single point urban interchange. So at all these locations, we'll be looking at different types of interchanges to to facilitate the obviously improving traffic flow and safety. And the biggest challenge in this this study will be the you can see right here in the portion that is in West Valley City, the forty forty one hundred South to SR two oh one. So these are the different West Valley study locations. So this is all the the locations that we're we're looking at with this study. And these are the locations specific to to West Valley City.
So can I ask you a question? On the one slide, it looks like forty seven hundred is a study, California is a study, and then forty one hundred or two oh one. And then elsewhere, it looks like it's thirty five hundred or two oh one.
I'm about to get there. You jumped the gun. That was good. That was a really good observation. So the project is funded from forty one hundred South to California. And that's, we're studying everywhere from forty one hundred South to California.
That's Wednesday.
That is the study where right now it's been broken up into three different environmental studies from preliminary analysis, forty one hundred South, looks like it was the traditional intersection will work there along with California. So right now we're looking at those. The whole area will be analyzed for to see what works best in that area. But the intersection spacing as such, for example, from forty one hundred South to forty seven hundred South and from forty one hundred South to thirty five hundred South, looks like there's enough spacing where a traditional intersection would work there. That has been done in other locations for Bangor. The project that has been funded by the Transportation Commission is from forty one hundred South to California.
So it's really just all one project.
But there's, but we're breaking it up into three different environmental documents right now and.
The media that seems to be from thirty five hundred to two oh one.
Yes, sir.
What I'm just trying to figure out is that that's a separate project that I mean, you seem to be doing them one at a time or one here and one there. Forty seven, that forty one, then the big one or looking at forty one as a big part of the.
So currently forty one hundred South to California is funded as one project. And it's funded for construction in twenty twenty eight. It is confusing and it's a nuance. It's really not that. I don't think the community will really notice notice that nuances as we as we work through them, as we work through the environmental process. It's more on a documentation standpoint. But but it is important to note that the scope, for example, of forty one hundred South in California, we believe a traditional intersection in that area will work, whereas thirty five to, it's a little north of two oh one, right? It's a little north of two oh one, right? There's that eighteen twenty south, north of two oh one. That's where the, the intersections are. Uh, too close for traditional intersection, right? So you'll need something, something different. And the current concept is a, is a frontage road, road system, right? I know the city council is familiar with that, that system. Um, and that's just a, that's a, you know, that's the concept that's currently funded. However, we'll be looking at that in more detail. And I'll be discussing that more as we, as we move through the presentation. Any questions about that? I think I. I think we covered. Some additional challenges through this area, um, is the, there's a large aqueduct, um, owned by Jordan Valley Water Conservation District. That aqueduct is in the center of the, center of the road, um, for forty-one hundred south to thirty hundred, thirty-one hundred south. And we're really breaking up these, these documents just to, to provide, I mean, this is a significant effort provides, um, opportunities for different resources to work on different areas of the project.
Question about the aqueduct.
Yeah.
So you said it's in the center of the road, is it all the roads that road curbs?
Um, that's best. From forty-one hundred south to, um. So I wrote that down right before, so. That's illustrated with a picture. So I can send you a picture with aqueduct is actually at. Yeah. I can do that. Um, and at forty-seven hundred south, it's on the, it's on the east side. And then as you go north, it goes to the center of the road. And then it, 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 um, kind of takes off right at, uh. I think it's at thirty-one hundred south that it kind of takes off. And, and goes on, it goes north or I mean east of the two oh one Bangor intersection. It's all over the place. It's really hard. That's why it's hard to describe with words. It kind of jigs.
I was after what's a dividing line.
Yeah, there was no water, right? So. But. So, um, the purpose and need and, and why are we doing this project? Why is this, um, I mean, this is a massive project, right? Mentioned that this, um, from forty-one hundred south to California is funded for five hundred, um, seventy million dollars. Um, and I think some of the, the purpose and, and need of this project is somewhat, you know, obvious. Um, we've all been stuck in congestion. We've all been, um. Seen, um. Accidents along Bangor due to the, the high speeds of both Bangor and the cross streets. So this, um, this project, um. Will help improve safety along the facility, both along Bangor and in the city, um, with the side streets that, um, intersect Bangor. It also will, um, improve travel time. And, uh, both, uh, through the city and eastern, north and south and east and west. I really like to think about this project, um, this purpose and need is, is a time back to quality of life. This project really is, is about improving, um, people's quality of life, um, less time in traffic, there's more time with the family. And I think that's, that's really important. And that's. Some of that I really want to focus on as we move through this study. Um, any questions here? Feel free to, if you have questions, feel free to. So just all them out. So we've been talking a lot about the forty-one hundred south, um, to California project. Obviously, because that's a very big project. However, forty-seven hundred south is the. Is coming right at us. This is the one that is currently funded for construction twenty twenty-three. Um, so you dot, um. The Transportation Commission, the UDOT Transportation Commission funded forty-seven hundred south, ninety-eight hundred south. And then hundred and thirty-four, hundred and thirty-fourth was funded through a special appropriation for the general fund. So these all, these three projects, um, are all scheduled for construction in twenty twenty-three. So that's coming pretty quick. The, the challenge, as we've been discussing, um, with forty-seven hundred south is, is the aqueduct. There's an aqueduct located on the east side. Um, potential, um, aqueduct relocation, um, is both, um. Timely and costly, um, and that could impact the schedule for the, for this project and, and make it slip to twenty twenty-four. Um, we are currently just starting the study. Um, you can see right here, this is a, a graph of, um, the study. We anticipate this, uh, environmental phase to take eleven months. And we will, uh, know more as, as the study continues, um, about the aqueduct relocation. So forty-seven hundred south and ninety-eight hundred south, um, are both funded for a hundred and sixty million. Um, any questions? Uh, we're gonna go, I have a slide a little later in the presentation that goes into a little more detail about how the, the public coordination. Will occur.
I have a question about the funding. So when you say that this is funded for twenty twenty-eight. Does that include the funding of searches properly?
Yeah, so, um, the way it works is, sorry, I can't, can't lean over too much. From forty-one hundred south to, um, to California is funded in twenty twenty-eight. That is cash flowed, um, based on, because the department would like, you know, we purchased right away earlier in the process in order to clear it for construction.
So the right away purchases will start.
Earlier. They will. Yes, sir.
So when would right away purchases start?
So on the larger segment, uh, the forty-one hundred south to, um, to California, that probably happened a year or two before the project starts. So, and forty-seven hundred south, that one is actually funded in twenty twenty-three. So that one's gonna happen a lot sooner. So as this figure shows, um, construction is. Is expected in twenty twenty-three. So once we finish the environmental study, we'll move right into. Um, construction or right, right into preparing for construction. That will include. Clearing of right away for, for construction, if that makes sense. So. So one of the challenges, um, with the aqueduct. Um, is it really prohibits the ability to take Bangor under, um, under the cross street. I, I don't know if you've noticed in other, other cities, sometimes Bangor will go over and sometimes Bangor will go under. But with the aqueduct there, it's, um. Makes it really difficult to take the intersection under the, the side street. And I'll talk about that a little bit more too, as we move through the presentation. So the, right now we're focusing on the forty-seven hundred effort. Um, because construction is twenty twenty-three. Um, the forty-one hundred south to SR two oh one. Um, that has a lot longer schedule. So you can see right here, the forty-seven hundreds, forty-seven hundred south project has a, has eleven month schedule. Uh, that's a pretty fast schedule. Forty-one hundred south to SR two oh one, due to the magnitude of this project and all the different potential solutions that could be, to be applied to here, we have a lot longer. Lot longer schedule. The schedule right here, I want to mention too, is also just draft. Um, twenty months, that's not a magic number that we have to meet by any means. However, um, it's always to have, have a, a good goal to work toward. Um, we plan on working with the city, um, to, you know, develop different alternatives, look forward to getting your input. And as we move forward and evaluate the different alternatives through this area. This is a, a significant investment, um, by the state and by the city, and we want to make sure that we did it right. California Avenue, I have the slide in here. Um, it's not West Valley City, obviously. But it's also on the same project line, uh, timeline to be, to be finished in twenty twenty-two. So public outreach, um. This public outreach, um, slide applies to each intersection study. Um, so we will be having, um, open houses for each intersection. Study that we conduct. So it'll be multiple inner, open houses and multiple opportunities for the public to, um, provide feedback to the department. Concerning their, their concerns and their, um, their desires and what they'd like to see in the project. So I'm gonna start at the top and just, I mean, you can read the slide too, but I'll elaborate a little bit on some of the bullet points. Um, city coordination, right now we're meeting a monthly with the city, uh, with Dan and Goby, um, to discuss the different, um, challenges. And different desires, the city would like to see incorporated into the project, mainly betterments and different, um. Different opportunities we can to partner to reduce project risk. And, um, make the project really, um, great for the community. Um, general public, um, so we are working, um. We'll have a media pushes. Um, we currently have a Bangor Highway website. The contact information for this environmental study will be the same contact information for the, for the current Bangor construction projects. And the website and hotline and email will all be consistent. Um. We'll also give, um. Give the city council, we don't have them today, but, uh, cards that have all that information. Um, and try to really empower you guys to, um. Uh, answer questions. We'll try to keep everyone informed of the current, uh, progress of the study. Um, we're also conducting public open houses in the beginning. So this, um. This general public slide really is, it's, um. It's. Linear, I guess, in time. I don't know how to say that. Thank you, chronological. Sort of, yeah. So, um, we'll be releasing a media press release here in the next, uh, next month. We'll be sending flyers to the, to residents near these intersections. To, um, inform them of a public open house that we'll be having in order to get feedback and, um. Like, as like I mentioned, to get their thoughts on the, the project study. Um, once we've gone through and identified all the different, uh, identified a preferred alternative, what we, what we'd like to, um, implement, we'll have neighborhood meetings. Those neighborhood meetings will be more, uh, intimate opportunity to, to disclose the impacts to affected property owners. Once we've had the opportunity to have neighborhood meetings, we'll have a public hearing. And that will be where we will release a draft environmental document that will show the concept and all the, the impacted resources. And then, as I mentioned before, we'll have, um, social media and hotline, email, website available all throughout the process. So here is a timeline for the forty-seven hundred south, um, project. We do not have a timeline yet for the, or a detailed timeline. For the, the. Our trip for effort, the forty-one hundred south to, to California. So we'll be sending out, as I mentioned, public mailers here in the next little bit. Um, July, I will be having a public open house, um, that will be in person and online. Along with the neighborhood meetings and public, uh, public hearing. So here are the, the different, um. Communication, um, different ways to, to communicate with the project team. So we'll, once I said, as I, as I said before, we'll be passing out cards, um. For the city, um, to hand out. So city involvement, um. Obviously, this project will have, um, large impacts to the city and we, we value the city's input and we. Want to work with you, um, to help, um, build a project that, that works for the community. So past projects, um, Bangor, you know, the conversion of these, these intersections to interchanges is not something new. We, we've been doing this for the past five, ten years now. Um, past city involvement, we've worked with cities to really address the project, the project aesthetics. Other items that we've worked with, as I mentioned, um, is to take the, take bigger highway over or under the current, um, cross streets. Um, that's a challenge in West Valley City due to the aqueduct. Um, in locations where the Bangor has been taken under, um, that's been a, a betterment paid by the, paid by the city to make that happen. And those betterment costs have ranged from two to six million. Um, but as I mentioned before, that, um, we, we can look at that if that's something of interest to the city. Um, however, due to the aqueduct, it will be a significant challenge. One item I'd really like to, to focus on is, um. Especially through, from thirty, thirty-five hundred south to, to, um, to California is how to provide, um, better active transportation links. I mean, freeways really do, they, they can divide communities, right? And we, we do recognize that. And we look forward to working with the city, um. And, and staff to really identify different ways where we can provide, you know, that active transportation linkage across Bangor. So I presented a lot of different information, um. Wanted to take this opportunity to have an, an open discussion. Um, this is just the beginning of the coordination. As I mentioned, this is the project kickoff. Wanted to provide this opportunity to, to find out what's, what's more important, what's most important to you guys about this process? And what are your hopes and fears, um, about this project?
Thank you. It's been three questions here. Number one. There are a lot of markings, all the L's, X's. And seeing that these markings in our streets around Bangor on either side are for surveying. Those are your markings?
Um, are you just talking on the pavement like there's? Yeah, they're, they're probably for utility. Um, we're marking all the different utilities so we can, uh, figure out. I mean, what the cost of the project will be.
People are asking about those. I have people that I know that tell me that you guys told them exactly which houses are being taken. They're telling the neighbors your house or.
But that's not true. We have not determined a, a final concept.
You, you don't know those and so you, when you got, when have been able to share that?
No, I do not know. We do not know.
Then last thing, and this is more of a comment, you mentioned, you know, the importance of this is quality of life. Um, I'd be interested in paying for a veteran to move into an ag. I, I know there will be a long, when we're talking about body of life. My concern isn't that people can travel quickly between Salt Lake and Carolina. I don't care. What I care about is West Valley. I think we're all afraid as we drive south. And see what's been done where backyards are now six feet deep. The sheds cut in half and the garage is eight feet deep. We can't park a car anymore and we all start up to it. Can we do a little better job? I'd rather take the whole lot. And not to be ruining everybody's house and we have to take it on both sides. We don't have to take it one side or the other so that we're not. Having this greater impact on residents and their.
No, that's a great comment. Um. So as we go through and impact residents and, and acquire property for the. For the expansion of Bangor, we, we go through and we do, we conduct appraisals. We look at the different damages and, and the quality of life on that parcel after. So that is something that we'll, we'll take into account as we move through, um, and. Acquire property for, for Bangor.
And we take a home and we make it so a homeowner doesn't want to live there. Maybe they only purchased half the property, but now it's gonna be. Somebody who doesn't really care or can only afford to live there. Just creates problems in our neighborhoods. But this house is all of a sudden not marketable like it's, the house is across the street because it's half the size.
Well, it's, it's a very, very valid concern and I think that's something we'll have to work through as we work through the project.
And learn from what's happened to the south. If this has to happen, we can't move to Magnol. Let's do a good job.
Thank you for the comment. Any additional? Just no comments?
I mean, describe some of the. What it's been like in these ongoing or the continuous communication meeting. So. With our forty-one hundred south project, the city obviously led out on, there was actually a really robust. Regular meeting. There was a CCT committee, a community communications team that included residents of the city. As well as the builders and city staff. There's always a perception that this is being done to us. And there's not a whole lot that we can do in the end, but at least that particular correspondence. Um, I thought that was fairly successful and residents. Concerns and input were actually taken. I, I saw. Incidents where they weren't taken into consideration and so, um, that. Project is, not everyone feels that that was done perfectly still, obviously, but. At least we can say that there was a pretty robust community input and, and reaction from the builders and those others involved. Can you tell me about how that's been with communities to the south to, to the?
I have actually not had the opportunity to work on the past Bangor projects to the south. Um, however, we did think the. I mean, the communication team did such a good job in forty-one hundred south that we hired the same communication team. I als- also had the opportunity to, I was the UDOT liaison for forty-one hundred south. And had the opportunity to really participate in crafting the, the, working with Dan and crafting those specifications. And I agree, I think that's, that's the approach. As you can see here, um, we're adding, we're, we're adding many opportunities to, to engage with the public. To provide opportunities to, um. Provide, make them feel like they're, I mean, make them feel, but really listen to their, their, um, their desires. Um, this is the environmental phase and we'll continue that throughout, um, the different phases. So I mean, we're just talking about. Um, identifying what we're gonna build in the future. However, um. We will can, we'll continue that as we, as we move through the project. But I can find out more. Katie can speak to what's, Katie Corianos is with Borox Engineers. She's our public involvement, uh, lead. She can speak more to what's been done on past Bangor projects.
Yeah, we actually added some additional. Oh, I forget, we're not all here. I'm quiet anyway, so hopefully. Working on my outside voice. Okay, hi, everybody. Um, just a quick update. We have actually added some additional opportunities for this set of studies than what we're done on previous. Okay, hi, everybody. Um, just a quick update, we have actually added some additional opportunities for this set of studies than what we're done on previous Bangater studies down further south. Um, just knowing the impacts that come along with it, the area that we're working in, we really want to go kind of above and beyond to provide people with options to be able to come and meet with us, hear from us. Give their input. Um, that early open house will be in person and online. I think we've learned in the last year or so that we can be pretty successful in both scenarios. So again, we want to reach as many people as we can, as often as we can, when we have new information to share and are able to take their feedback and incorporate as much as as is reasonable into the process. So we're going a little bit extra than we have in the past, I think, seven or eight studies. So hopefully that, that's something that helps you guys. And let us know though, as we go, right? If you're hearing things from the public, we want to know that and adjust and kind of, we're always trying to do a better job. So I appreciate that feedback.
And really, we want, and I mean, like, as you were discussing, Steve, right? Um. Make sure that we, that we, you know, that the proper information is getting out there. One thing I do want to also um offer is um. I mean, we'd love to, I mean, if you guys have some free time, I'd love to take the opportunity to to drive the project with you. I'm just to hear your thoughts and um, you know, further the the coordination between you dot and the city. So I'd put that offer out there too. I'll give you my, I'll leave my, some of my business cards after. Um. Trying to think, is there, is there any other, I I don't have any other items to um discuss, but I wanted to make sure that everyone had the opportunity to get their questions answered. So I I did have the opportunity to um to sit in on some of the the study, the the study conducted with West Valley City. Um, we also hired avenue consultants that will be analyzing this interchange. I had the opportunity to discuss the that study with them, but I think we too will, having some of those discussions about, I mean, providing access throughout all the, you know, existing. Intersections and or, you know, do we remove some access in order to to reduce impacts? So I think we'll be having those conversations as as we move through the study. So we're aware of that. Thank you.
All right. Get my calendar. Yeah. With that, then, we. Move on, I guess, to the next item on our agenda. The council calendar. Any comments? Hearing none, we'll go to future agenda items. Any?
Mayor?
Yes.
I have one from Wayne. He just wanted me to note that the rezon application proposed by the developer at the Redwood Drive-In has been withdrawn. And will not proceed through the planning commission or come before the city council. He just wanted that stated here um and and for your information as well.
The government's channel is very important.
Yeah.
Well, I'm sure it was interesting, but I am having some real technical difficulties with the sound. So uh. Councilman Bueller, uh, I'll rely on you as mayor pro tem for the things that aren't done up at this uh, the podium, the microphone. Because I'm just not hearing it.
Okay, so Nicole was saying that uh future projects that have been coming up at the redevelopment of the Redwood Theater, the Redwood Drive-In, that's been pulled by the developer.
Oh. I picked up the Redwood Theater and it's been pulled, so okay. I heard. A good share of what you said, not all of it.
We're on, uh, so that was a potential future agenda item then? Just to know that that won't be happening. Right. Are there any other future, future potential agenda items here in the room? There are none there.
There are not? Okay. Council reports.
Uh, Don Christensen has a report.
Just want to report that today I met with the municipal. Cities and councils. And uh. We met with someone from Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District. And they emphasized the conservancy part of their district. Uh, they mentioned the flip your strip. Many cities are actually pulling green space that's not needed and and that. You know, just to avoid having to water it. They suggested that. The cities tend to get together and and do some consistent messaging. Uh, because, you know, one city right now, I know of, is limiting watering use. Everything else, others are saying, well, let's live with it for a while. And so they're just trying to say, let's be consistent, try to message it. Uh, they, one of the main things they mentioned was that we need to monitor the water use in our parks and recreation areas. Uh, kind of lead by example. And I think Nancy, you're doing that pretty well on a trip to track those.
Absolutely.
Okay. Then the county mentioned that looking at the long term. The drought looks to be our possible new normal. And maybe a little more than possible. So we should start to plan now for such types of events. And the shape of policy, same as uh Councilman Bueller mentioned last week. So I think we're starting on on that. We'll go from there. And then immediately following that, I opened up my other uh computer and got into the uh Healthy West Valley Committee. Coalition, and they basically talked about forming uh a mission and a vision for them a little bit more. It's been kind of lax in the last little while, just getting organized. And so if we want to. Become a a city committee, need to focus that vision. And they talked a a long time about that and worked up some good ideas. We'll get those in the minutes. Get them out to everybody so we can see kind of what they're doing. But they've got some some big plans going. And I switched computers and joined here while I drove my wife back from the dentist.
So I'm your water conservation. One of the biggest things that um the Conservancy District is having a problem with is consistent. Messaging, but every city has their own standards. And their one push is just to encourage residents to water one less day a week than they normally do. So I don't know if we can put that somewhere on our website. Uh, not all residents know to go to state website or the Conservancy District. Most go right to their city. So if we could put any kind of messaging. And then for our Parks Department, the Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District does have grants. Um, that can help with studies, messaging and equipment that is remote. And smart equipment for running our sprinkling systems. So that we don't water on the day it's raining or the day after it rains, you know, but it's more planned out. And so quite a few cities have been applying for those grants, and they're seeing a substantial. Amount of money coming in and helping them buy those because they're not cheap. We own a city thousand dollars. And so if you can get half that paid by the Conservancy District, that's a big help for us.
I think that's a good idea, except for the question of when is it going to rain? It never rains.
I would raise as soon as somebody turns on the sprinkling system.
Right after I wash my cars.
And then as a city, we might want, or we might have, want to have a presentation from Ranger Hunter to let us know if they need us to put out a. Water on even days if your house number ends with an even day or, I mean, even number or odd day for the other, just so that people kind of get that message that there really is a problem.
Sounds like a fuel shortage in California. Younger.
There's just nobody else standing on water though.
Any other reports in the room? No other reports in the room there.
Okay. Well, thank you for helping out there. I've already asked that they check on the sound, see what we can do to approve it. There is no need for a closed session. Uh, so unless anyone has any further comments, I believe our study moving, meeting is at its conclusion.
Move to adjourn.
Without objection, we are adjourned. Hearing no objection was unanimous. We'll see you in uh another twenty twenty five minutes, our regular meeting. Thank you.